Hi Roger, hi Ursula, this is Margie with Bosmati. How are you guys?
Pretty good. Hi Margie.
Hello Margie, I'm great.
How are you doing?
(laugh) I'm really well. I'm really well. How about you Ursula?
I'm doing really well too, thanks.
Yay. Roger and you?
I'm fine. Glad to be here.
Yes, we're glad, so glad you're here. Today we're getting together and chatting about Ursula's first series of Remote Energy Sessions. This was a Grace Integrity Series and she's never done any remote work, so this is super exciting to share that experience with everyone. And so Roger, do you want to ask Ursula if she has any questions? Or her- about the sessions, or what experiences she had?
Yes, I'd like to (cough) ask what you came in expecting Ursula. You'd never done any sessions like this before. And I would like to know if you were anxious, or how you actually felt about it? And how they ended up being relative to what you had expected.
Yeah, um, I wasn't sure what to expect, honestly. I was nervous, um, and anxious. And that's how I get a lot of the time about, um, the unknown. I didn't know if I was gonna feel something, or if it was gonna be gradual or profound. Um, and really it was both. It was both gradual and profound. I feel like it's made a difference both at the time and through serving as a reminder after the fact, to be more mindful of the connection to myself. Um, there was anxiety, not knowing what to expect and anticipating, especially the first session. But there was also this underlying feeling of like trust, or that it was gonna be okay. And that's not something that's really normally a main character, um, in my experiences with something new. And so I really do think that, um, a large part of that is due to just the way that you and Margie have been so accessible and kind and reaching out. And I think that that really made me feel comfortable with the process, um, before it kind of even started. So, I appreciate that from both of you very much.
Great. Um, thank you for that. And I want- how long did it take you to settle into a session? Um, once it started? Uh, by the way, what we do, as soon as a session starts, we open a field up and we hold it. It's a protected space. And we read an invocation that initiates the energies we're going to be working with. And Grace is a very gentle- it digs deep into old stored emotions and stuff. But it's very gentle, a lot of love and compassion in the field. Um, and as long as we can let go and focus on our heart space and surrender, sort of, um, the session energies really support us and can relax us. So, did it take you very long into the session to, um, relax and let go and experience those energies?
I think for the first session, um, which is when it took the longest, um, it took me probably about the twenty minute mark is when I probably really relaxed and just kind of surrendered to the process. Um, so, uh, for the first twenty minutes, I was kind of just trying to relax and figure out what to concentrate on, which I know is kind of off the point. Um, but I just kind of had to relax and, um, just kind of get into the groove of it. And I think after the first twenty minutes is really when I surrendered to the- to the process. And thought, okay, let's just do this. Because at first I was kind of, you know, sometimes especially as a person with anxiety, I'll like half do something to get an overview of it, and then commit more fully the second time, once I've like scoped out the situation. And, um, so for the first session, which is really not like me normally, I just- I said to myself, you know what, just do this. Because this isn't something, if I'm gonna sign up and I'm gonna do this and I wanna experience this, I need to just do it fully. And if it's horrible, then it'll be over in an hour. And if it's great, then think of how proud I will be of myself for actually committing. And so, it was, yeah, right around that twenty minute mark that I was like, you know what, just go for it. And that's when I was really able to kind of absorb what was happening during the process.
So, the, um, first session probably, well, uh, its focus can take us back into, uh, traumas and all from our early life. And this can, uh, bring up a lot of emotion. But it goes back into even very subtle things, like perhaps you had your lollipop taken away from you, uh, when you were two years old. And you can imagine at that point, at that age, that could be something that was very traumatic. You might have felt like your world was ending or something. So, um, did you experience much for emotional release during the session? That you recall?
Um, yeah, so energetically, I experienced, um, at first, kind of like a, let's see. So at first there was the resistance. And then once I kind of surrendered, um, there were a lot of aspects that kind of focused on self-love, I guess. Um, and like being there for myself. And even just like a sense of profound gratitude for like the simple things in life. Um, or that, you know, there was a lot of focus on like showing up for myself, which I think was probably an underlying theme of the energy work itself. And then also just that came on the tails of surrendering to the process itself was, you know, okay, well, do this for myself, show up for myself. And let's see what happens when I like focus on connecting to my heart space and getting rid of other distractions. And just- and just kind of sitting with myself and realizing, you know what, it's really not that bad. And there's probably many fewer things in this world that I can't handle than- than sometimes I'm afraid is the case. So, there was a lot of, um, there was an aspect of confidence and showing up for myself and self-love. And like, this is worth it, to at least try. Um, and then, there were, like, I also felt that, um, I felt a lot of love for like other people in the world that are, um, specifically people I know during that session that are going through hard times that I was kind of sending love to as well. So, I mean, there was definitely a focus on like suffering or trauma that has happened. But I feel like the focus was healing and love in lieu of the suffering, rather than the suffering or trauma taking the center stage, I guess, if that makes sense.
Oh my gosh, that was really beautiful.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and perfectly- perfectly spoken, um.
This is- this is what- how Grace works. It takes us to, um, as long as we can surrender, stop, uh, trying to figure things out and controlling. Um, we're working with high frequency energy here. And unconditional love, compassion, forgiveness. And it changes our perspective oftentimes to that of an observer of what happened to us. It helps us see other people as human also, so we can drop, uh, blame and anger and judgment, those kinds of things, um, while we touch in on the compassion. And, uh, the self-love is a big, uh, that's where- that's the energy we're looking at all of these things from, actually. So, um, these are the energies- these are the energies that actually are behind the healing that occurs. And while we- while we see, observe things from those, um, faster frequencies, uh, we can often let them go very quickly. Um, much of it is often instantaneous. And, um, so we- we go through the emotion and all, but we don't feel a deep pain that may be residual from the traumas. And, um, so we carry, um, what typically happens to us as we grow and we go through all these little situations, we start building up emotional energies on top of, say, each little trauma that happened to us. So we carry those through our life and we develop patterns and programs to, um, help us survive and get through life without experiencing pains anymore. So it's these, uh, excess energies that we want to clear off. Um, that's pretty much the intent of Grace Integrity. Then we can learn more and practice, um, our connection to those higher frequencies through our heart. And as we, uh, those situations come up again, perhaps, we won't latch on to the thoughts and everything that justify what we're carrying and spiral down into the lower frequency energies again, like the judgment and guilt and regrets, all those kinds of things. We can stay in a space of love, self-love, uh, and compassion and all those things. So we can go through life, uh, from a much, I guess you would say, higher, more peaceful state, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So Ursula, can I ask you, um, what- so after the session, did you, in your practical everyday life, um, did you notice anything different in your response to things, or in how you were operating?
Yeah, um, I thought that the overall process was profound. But I will say that I did notice more of a difference within the following week of the session than, um, than actually the session itself. So, my first session was on Tuesday. And the following weekend was really rough for me. Um, I had some issues in my family life that were sad and frustrating and, uh, would normally ignite my almost constant quest for control. Um, especially as a person with anxiety. Instead, however, um, my reaction surprised even me. I was sad, but I allowed myself to be sad. And normally in- in situations like these, I would divert to an anxiety about being sad and focus more on the anxiety about being sad and getting rid of the sadness and the anxiety, um, rather than just feeling sad. And, um, and embracing everything that feeling sad entails. And I guess too, like, within the past couple of weeks, I've started to realize that being sad is part of the process. And it's- it's all a process. It's not just experience it and/or stuff it down and then move on and pretend it didn't happen. And, um, so instead, over the weekend, like, I cried. And I felt goo- and it felt good. Like it was cleansing and I felt a connection with myself. And it was sort of this allowance that I hadn't given myself in what seemed like a long time. Um, that I- I was just allowed myself to be sad and experience the sadness. And through experiencing the sadness, I was able to move through the sadness instead of just compartmentalizing it or pushing it under the rug. Um, and I know that that's directly attributable to the clearing work. Um, I know that I've only just begun, but I can see a measurable difference. And I'm super excited for what's next.
Yes.
That's cool.
That's really, really cool and so beautiful. And, you know, I- I've said this, but I- your courage in sharing this, um, and with everyone, and it is really amazing to me and very grateful. Um, so I know that that was with the first Grace Integrity Session, and we did a series of three. And, um, so Roger, if you want to share any more about the first one, or if you want to talk about the second and third, that would be great. And just your experience, um, prior to, um, or if you had any- any sensations that you wanted to share that maybe were a little different, or going into the deeper layers and- and being able to hold those frequencies, Ursula. So, Roger, do you want to chat about the second one? Cause each one has like a- yeah.
Yeah, I think we've covered- we've covered the first one pretty well. We did send your anxiety, by the way, into the session, um, early on. And, um, that there was some emotional release. But, um, you did actually, surrender did come in for you and things started changing at that point. So, it's very common to have, um, the resistances you're talking about. That's one of our biggest, I guess, uh, that's where the trust comes in, just allowing- allowing things to happen so we can step into a new space, somewhere we've never been before. So, there's some fear sometimes, but it's all good. The second- the second session, um, had to do with, uh, this was, um, masculine and feminine, divine masculine and feminine balance, and touching in with those energies. And respect came in, uh, strong at the beginning of this one, as a code we were working with. And this leads, uh, or this is linked to often our interactions and views, uh, toward the other gender. Um, dissolving disdain patterns and, um, and negative views we might have, uh, toward the other gender, which are very common in society. Now we see each other as separate and, um, often one better than the other and blame the other. So, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, um, probably throughout the, our entire society with, um, shifting our views toward the other gender. So it was a very powerful, uh, start to it. There was a lot of mental clearing, uh, that was required, getting rid of shifting beliefs, uh, that we've always carried. And going to a place of basically higher perception, the observer and, um, seeing things from a higher, higher, more loving view. So, compassion and forgiveness were big in this one. Self-love and allowing, um, and that gives ourselves- the self-love which you've already talked about, uh, once we increase that, it gives us a- a certain type of freedom where we let go of dependencies on others. And it also allows, it changes our view toward other people. Um, if we love ourselves, uh, we develop the ability, or we come to a place where we can also love others and allow them to be what they are, um, without judgment. So this was probably, it seemed to be a very emotional session for you, uh, again. And does that, um, sound kind of in line with what your experience was?
Yeah, um, so the- the instructions for the session also noted to, like you said, focus on the feminine and masculine energies, um, inherent, like, within me. And of course, these energies, I realize, aren't like feminine and masculine in the way that Western society defines them, but more so in the softness and the nurturing of the divine feminine and the steadfastness of the divine masculine.
Right.
Um, and I thought these two energies were interesting to focus on. Because if, um, if our audience listens to my second astrology reading with, um, the amazing Andrea Bryant, they might re- remember that these were two themes that would be prevalent this moon cycle for me. Um, both delicacy and perseverance. And so, I think that, um, it was, this was a really good opportunity to carve out the time to meditate on those qualities. Um, especially because there have been a lot of issues in my personal and family life that require, which was also touched on in the astrology session, um, communication, but- but delicate communication. Or standing my ground, but in a- in a delicate or polite way. Where, you know, just because you stand up for yourself doesn't mean you have to do it in an aggressive way. And so, um, yeah, I think this was a great opportunity to- to really meditate on those qualities. Um, the biggest difference that I noticed between this session and the first was not only the lack of resistance to get started, but the eagerness to get started. Um, I was looking forward to this session for the whole day. Um, for the first half of the session, I concentrated on kind of getting settled and relaxing into myself. Um, clearing away the clutter and the worries and the what ifs from the day. Um, and then themes again of self-love were prevalent. And it was kind of nice to just focus on like myself and how much I love myself, or working on building that bond. Um, I spend a lot of energy on my relationships with other people. But it's funny how I don't consciously spend that same amount of time and energy on myself and cultivating that relationship with myself. So, I think it's- the value is-
That's a cool- cool that you, uh, recognize that. That's pretty common, uh, isn't it? Yes.
Yeah, definitely. Um, so yeah, I think- I think that's a huge part of the value of these sessions even is just like forcing myself to sit down and take the time. Because it's something that is always like, oh, I'll do that later, or, you know, I'll do this first. Or the, you know, other things take precedence. And, uh, so yeah, it's- it's nice to- to have to, I guess.
To take the time to get to take care of ourselves. And- and because you're such, um, a caring and loving and empathetic, um, person, sharing that with your friends, it's when we do that for ourselves, we're actually just naturally doing it for them, you know? And it's not- it's- it's not out of wanting to control it or make it the way we think it should be. It becomes very just natural and- and much, much easier. Um, so, that's- that's also a really cool thing to remember. Any thoughts on that, Roger, and how that works?
Well, I- I just wanted to mention about the divine masculine and divine feminine energies. This is all, uh, interconnected to, you know, what is inside of us and how we react to those energies which we've set up, um, uh, views or perspectives toward from when we were very small. Probably going back to the influences of our mothers and fathers. This is all in a connected end, um, is reflected in our three D lives, our interaction with other people. So, you know, you don't just, uh, one day decide that you're gonna treat everyone equally. You need to, these, um, dissonances inside of us with these energies have to be resolved, uh, first. And it's like a holistic, uh, healing that occurs, right?
Mm-hmm.
Acceptance of both of those energies. If we have issues with our mother or father, perhaps, that'll- that'll be reflected toward the divine feminine or masculine. And it'll be, uh, some, uh, type of separation or dissonance within us where we don't love ourselves entirely. Because those energies are, they're actually not separate, but, um, um, it's our view that separates them. But, um, in order to achieve the self-love that we're looking for, that all has to be resolved and balanced out. And then it can reflect out into our daily lives. So, it's very important work. Uh, some of the most important work that we do is with those energies.
So, that was your second session. And going into the third, and- and I do want to say that these were a week apart. So there was time for integration and, um, and processing and understanding, right Ursula? So, um-
Mm-hmm, definitely.
And so, your third session, um, Roger, do you want to share what that was about a little bit? And, um, and share the different experi- we can go into the different experiences from there?
The third session was soul integration, which is, um, we set an intent at session start to reclaim all parts of us, to return to wholeness, so that we can, um, incorporate all that into our daily lives again. And, uh, the need for that is because of traumas and such, again, that we may have gone through in our lives, where little parts of us, uh, say if we've left things unresolved, we might leave- leave a little aspect of us or a connection to some situation. And, um, those can be energy drains or, um, trigger things in us that'll spiral us down again. So, um, our intention to return to wholeness, um, often improves our stance, uh, brings us back to a place where we can speak our truth again, healing all of those things. So there- there can be a lot of emotion involved here too. And, um, uh, resistance, because, um, there can be a lot of judgments and angers, fears connected to those situations in our past. So, and there was, um, uh, there was quite a lot of resistance in this, um, session. I believe till probably about halfway through when we went into a deeper surrender, there, uh, there was some resistance to actually even looking back into our past at all. It's like, okay, that's gone, why do I even have to go there? And, but then, um, some acceptance started. And, um, there was a lot of, uh, a lot of those old things flashing through the field, um, that Margie and I noted. But, um, also, uh, quite a lot of emotion. So, how did that one go for you?
Yeah, um, that one was pretty difficult for me. I just felt, um, it was hard to focus and it was hard to just really get into the session. Um, I was restless and I had trouble focusing. But I did appreciate the guidance to imagine, like in the instructions that were sent out, to imagine, like, recollecting pieces of myself that have been lost due to various situations, traumas, and even people and relationships that I've experienced. Um, I've had a lot going on personally lately, and so I appreciated that new perspective. Before this session, um, I hadn't really considered that lost pieces of myself could remain so until I consciously collected them back. Um, so I thought that that was a meaningful exercise in consciously reflecting on energy dr- drains, um, both past and present. So, I realized that, like, I was less open to the session, but I feel like the exercise transcended the session and gave me a perspective, not only of where I have spent my energy, but even like where I'm spending it now. Um, I didn't really experience any physical sensations in the third session the way that I more obviously did in the first session through like clearing of the tension in my shoulders and back. But I did still feel more relaxed after the session. And, um, so that was definitely not an easy session, but it was definitely worth it afterwards. Like, really glad that I had done it.
Yeah, cool. You came to a new place, like, um, um, like standing your ground where you were gonna- you were committing to, uh, speaking your truth, regardless of, uh, residual, say, patterns and stuff that perhaps were connected to the, uh, soul being fragmented somewhat, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just a new stance where you, regardless of what came up, you were gonna speak, uh, speak from your truth. And, uh, forgiveness, as you might imagine, was a big energy in here, um, and important theme as we go through all of those situations. We may not even know what we're going through, um, what parts of ourselves, uh, we're reintegrating. And actually, there is no separation that really occurs in truth. It's just ties and stuff that we have, more or less, to, um, the different situations that happen. And a lot of it can be karmic also, things that have come down to our family and such. But, um- But, um, um, and also what was important in this was, there was an insight and understanding, um, of the fact that we have a choice of how we see things in each, uh, situation that comes up. We can choose our perspective and what energy we align to, uh, when we deal with it. So for example, if, yes, like we can come from a place of love and, uh, understanding or judgment or fear perhaps. So the knowledge that we have the choice became, um, very clear in this one. It felt very empowering actually. So it was cool.
Yeah, it was, for sure.
Super, super cool and exciting. Anything else in your, that you'd like to share, Ursula, in, um, possibly your daily life? How you've noticed some shifts or, um, just anything?
Yeah, um, I feel like going through this process and hearing you both speak about energy healing, um, is almost like learning a new language. Not only in terms of understanding, in a new way, but the way that you both talk about challenges, problems, or even just observations of self. Um, I'm an editor, so I have a proclivity toward words and communication, but this is like a whole new world has opened up, um, for me. A world with an underlying thread of acceptance and love. And I'm really just looking forward to exploring it. I feel energized and curious and passionate about this project. And I'm so excited that things have aligned in this way that I can explore it with you both, um, as amazing knowledgeable guides. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, Ursula, for your trust.
Thank you, Ursula. For your courage especially, um, many people are afraid of, uh, looking at deeper inside of themselves to met what, you know, runs them and all. So it takes a lot of courage to, uh, step into that and take a look. But the, the rewards are often great, how it change, how it can change our life and perspective on things.
Yes.
It's beautiful work.
And Roger, thank you so much for your time and, uh, not only with the sessions, but also, um, for talking with us today. It's, I am very grateful.
It's been my pleasure. And I'd like to mention my website is recoveryourheart.com. That's where my, that's my web space.
Yep.
So thank you for having me.
Of course, of course. Sorry, I forgot to mention that in the beginning. Um.
Okay.
And, and we'll follow up on Basmati, um, after our next session. So I'm looking forward to that. And thank you again, Ursula.
All right, thank you both so much.
All right, we'll talk to you soon.
Very good, thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right.